Well, good evening and welcome to the Public Housing Authority Commission meeting. After this, we will have our regular study session. But with that, I'd like to call our Public Housing Authority Commission meeting to order, and clerk, please take the role of the commissioners.
Chairman Hartke.
Here.
Vice Chair Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Laurine.
Here.
Ms. Encinas.
Here.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yeah.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Orlando.
Here.
Commissioner Paulston.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Very good. Thank you all. Do we have any unscheduled public appearances for the Public Housing Authority?
No, we do not.
Okay. Before we vote on our consent agenda, we have one item. Item number two, the FSS Action Plan that was called up for a presentation by Councilmember Ellis. Leopold. Our most recent award winner of the Gabe Zimmerman Award.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Good evening. I'm going to just quickly give you some highlights of our family self-sufficiency program. So what you see before you are some of the components of that program. And I think it's important to point out that this is open to both our public housing residents as well as our Section 8 tenants. And the whole idea about this is really helping those families get to that level of self-sufficiency. The program is designed to take about five years. The families can ask for an additional extension to one-year extensions, but you see, our average length is about four years. And then HUD provides the funding for our two FSS specialists that run this program, Ms. Myra and Ms. Vicki. And they've both been doing a wonderful job of that. Pretty soon, you're going to see some of the highlights from this last year's graduation. We have 60 families that are enrolled for both public housing and Section 8, and there is a waitlist for both as well. Program components, it's really, again, about focusing on those things that can help with family self-sufficiency, looking at their education or job training. Some of the recipients come into the program with jobs and some do not, but the goal, of course, is to have better employment and to get the improved life skills. And what is one of the great components of the SSS program is the escrow account that gets set up during this process. So many of our graduates go on to purchase homes. And as you know, we're fortunate to have the community land trust model here in Chandler with Newtown. So many of them are Newtown home buyers through this program as well. Some of our recent accomplishments in 2024, we had nine graduates. I think what's really significant, as you look at that 416% increase in income, that's a huge increase in income for the average. We had four earned college degrees. And one of those was, some of them were bachelor's degrees, but we had one that earned a master's degree during this time as well. So far, one has bought a new home, but several of our graduates are on their way to buying new homes. They're still participating in the Newtown program. Just some of the success stories I wanted to highlight tonight, as you see before you. I think, again, the focus on here that you see on the slide is that there's a focus on education. You see that people went and they got promotions during this time. And I think equally important is looking at the components of what happens with the family. So it's not just the parent that has the benefit of the SSS program, but you can see, like in John's case, both of his daughters are going on to pursue careers in the medical field. In Judy's case, same thing. Her daughter is enrolled in a college nursing program. And so it's really important to know that this has an impact on the entire family. With that, I'll take any questions?
Commissioner Ellis.
Thank you so much. This is such an amazing program. I remember years ago when you enrolled and started this whole program, my whole thinking was how we were going to move people quicker because we have such a waiting list. You mentioned that right now. How many do we still have in waiting lists to get into this program?
You know, I mean, I have to check on what our numbers are, but I believe, I'm trying to, I think the last time there was at least, probably at least 20, and sometimes it's even double what we actually are able to take. There are a lot of families that qualify for this program. And of course, as you said, we tried to get through people through as quickly as possible, but it is based on individual goals, and some of those goals definitely take time, especially if you're pursuing a four-year degree.
Correct. This is definitely an evidence-based program. I can see the trend. I can see trajectory and how we transforming not only just the people that are going to the program, but the whole family and bloodline for that matter that is coming along. One thing I wanted to find out from you is why is it that we are not shorting the program so that we could truly get more people exit faster? Because I asked that before when I first got on council. Can we get a quicker turnaround? Because we have so many condensed programs now for education where someone can get an 18 months and two years and be an RN and those kinds of things. Can we look back into doing that so we can alleviate some of the backlog that we have?
Commission member, through the Chair Hartke and Commission Member Ellis, I think that the biggest challenge with us is that we do only have the two staff members, so they can only handle 60 cases each. So that is definitely one of our challenges. As far as the educational pursuit, we can certainly look at what other programs are out there. We do look for partners to come in and do some of the training that we have with the families. So it's not, it's not city staff necessarily doing the training. There are partners in the community that come out and do some of the workshops and the training. But we can certainly continue to look at educational opportunities and can, we'll look at maybe bringing in some new partners as well. I think that the challenge is it's just the time it takes for a lot of the families to get through their goals.
Okay, so the five years is the length that you can actually dedicate it for that program? Or can we shorten it a little bit? Because you mentioned partners. The more partners we have, I think, the more we'll be able to do.
Five years is what is allowed by the program. However, we, our average right now is four years. So we do have, we have reduced that down to the four years. And then there are some families that there could be extenuating circumstances that may go beyond the five years. And it's, I don't think it's very often, though, that we have those exceptions that go beyond five years. And so, you know, we continue to look for ways to improve it. And I will say that this is a program that we need more support for, and we'll, we'll make it a priority to look for community partners to try to bring some more support in for the program.
Thank you. I would love to see a little bit more eyes on it and pushing it higher up the priority because we're getting such great results from this program. So it is important for us to elevate it a little bit higher into the hierarchy of getting different things done here in the city. Thank you so much. I really appreciate the team. I know you guys are doing such an amazing job. Every time I meet with some people that have gone to the program, their lives totally change. And so that's what we want it to be all about for Chandler. Thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate the support. Chandler actually had more graduates than the other cities in those last couple of years, so we're very proud of that.
Always. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Vice Chair.
Yes, Leah, thank you. I want to just compliment your team since I'm kudos to your team because I had a constituent who was sharing that they had needed some support. And the constituent needed that extra push, and your team got on it immediately and was able to help that constituent find housing that they needed for their family. And I just wanted to send kudos to you and your team. You're doing a good work. Keep doing the good work, you know, keep, keep moving us forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the support of the Public Housing Commission and City Council, so thank you for that.
Additional questions, comments? Leah, I'll say that that was easily one of the most inspiring nights I've had in the past year, was attending that and listening to these amazing stories. And for however and whatever reason, to give people really a runway to fly. And I think this program has done it. It was, I would hold him and was just talking to Lynn for the longest time about how great this was and how inspiring this was. So thank you for allowing us in the city to really change and transform not just lives, but the trajectory of generations.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, I believe a motion would be in order, but before you do, I think we have a new motion maker.
I move that we approve items 1 through 5 of the consent agenda on the Public Housing Authority Commission Monday, June 24, 2024.
Second. The motion, second by Commissioner Orlando. No recusals, no others to speak of. Council, please vote. Oh, actually, clerk, please take the commission.
Vice Chair Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Laurine.
Yes.
Commissioner Encinas.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
Commissioner Orlando.
Yes.
Commissioner Paulston. Chairman Hartke.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Thank you, commissioners. That's the agenda items for our Public Housing Authority meeting. Welcome to the June 24 study session. And we've been, these show up on different platforms and social medias. So I'd like to call our study session the order. Clerk, please take the role.
Mayor Hartke.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Encinas.
Here.
Councilmember Ellis.
Present.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Orlando.
Here.
Councilmember Paulston.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, we have some exciting appearances. I'm going to invite Councilmember Orlando to join me up front.
All right, council and city staff and our audience are first asked to do with recognizing this sea of green on the first and second row and third rows there. This is our civic graduation for Civic Cohort 2024. I'd like to call up Alexis Apadaka. Civic engagement, we all know, is important to the future of Chandler. And Chandler is a city that strives to create opportunities for partnership, for engagement, and, and continue to do better. I think we do an excellent job, but there's always better ways to do that. So this is our fourth year of our civic class. And the civic engagement, we all agree, is just extremely important, particularly in today's divided partisan society where, where it's been a true joy to give our, this class, the nuts and bolts of the city and what do we do and why we do and what your bills look like and what do our police do. So this class is an interactive 13-session program, providing Chandler residents with a behind-the-scenes look at the city. These participants took time out of their busy lives to meet with us, city leaders and staff, tour facilities to participate in interactive sessions to learn how the city runs. We're so grateful to each of you for taking such an active role in your hometown and understanding local government better. So on behalf of myself and council, we want to give you a big thank you. And we're great, we're so grateful that you took this time to engage in our city. Alexis, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. That was a great overview of the program, and I would echo your thank you to all of our participants for dedicating their time to learning more about the city and how they can become further involved in their community. The only thing I'd like to add before introducing our 2024 civic participants is a big thank you to all of our city staff who make this program possible each and every year. Civic spans six months, and our participants visit with over 19 different departments and divisions throughout their time with us. This program represents the efforts of our entire city, so thank you to all of Team Chandler who make this possible. So with that, let's go ahead and get started recognizing our 2024 civic class. Participants, when I call you up, please come to the front, accept your certificate, and then stay at the front, but step aside as others go ahead and accept their certificates as well. At the end, we'll go ahead and take a big group photo. So first, Ashay Aurora. Amanda Pate. Anna Curly. Candace Teralba. Danya Hinton. Denali Stricker. Eddie McKay. James LaSueur. Jane Jornstand. Jane Cowell. Judith Roche. Kyle Koschel. Linda Ems. Marsha Weiss. Melissa Bickham. Melody Locke. Michelle Wilson. Omar Rodriguez. Phelan Mahoney. Stephanie Tyers. Stephen Briggs. And Tom Bickham. Thank you all so much for your time and your dedication over this past six months. I know it's a long program, but from all of us, thank you for your commitment. And let's go ahead and group up for a picture.
And we had a few more that couldn't be here tonight because of travel plans, so we did a private little ceremony at Sunset Library just last week, right? Very good. All right, this next one, oh, you guys don't want to leave. You should stay for this next one. Trust me. We are going to recognize the Pretty Precise Step Team. So if Lakita Harris and the Pretty Precise Team can come on up. This is an exciting recognition. The Chandler-based Pretty Precise Step Team has won the West Coast National Championship. They competed against 15 teams throughout the season and came up on top. So, Team Chandler, you might have seen this impressive group perform here at City Hall. And I've heard that we might have a special performance prepared for us today. But before we get to that, Lakita, do you have anything you'd like to say about the championship win?
Hello. So I am Lakika, and my daughter Cheyenne were the founders of Pretty Precise Step Team. We started throughout the pandemic in 2000 to just have a safe place for young women to go. Just, it was just a team. So we are now a nonprofit. We support young women ages seven to 17 in mental health education and anti-bullying. So the stepping part is just an outlet, but we support these young ladies, each one of them. We have a total of about 35 girls. We can only get a few today because they are all traveling as well. But our competition team, each one of them were 3.6 GPA and above. So while they did this, they went to St. Louis, Houston, and finishing off with a national championship in Las Vegas, they were able to maintain all of their GPAs and still travel, get everything done. So if you guys would like to follow us, please find our website, prettysteppin.org. And our Instagram is underscore dot prettypreciststepteam. And we're always looking for volunteers and for our partnerships at the stadiums amongst other things. Thank you.
Thank you, Lakika. Why don't we do a photo? And then I'm looking forward to see what this surprises, so.
Oh, one more thing. When we go and to competitions, the girls are able to visit various colleges, HBCUs. And so they've had a nice tour of white dorm life and being introduced to historically black colleges look like.
Very good. Councilmember Orlando, I hear that those replaced knees were made for such a night as this. All right, and our next announcement is a proclamation. Parks and Rec Month. So if I could have our Parks and Rec team come on up here. All right, let me read this proclamation, and then Cory is going to share some words with us. Whereas Chandler Parks and Recreation Programs enhance the quality of life within our community, providing the diverse and inclusive opportunities to discover, imagine, and grow. And whereas engaging programs and classes inspire community members of all ages to move, connect, and explore, reinforcing the personal, environmental, and economic benefits of recreation and leisure programs. And whereas the city of Chandler's parks, playgrounds, aquatic, and recreation centers are more than just places, they're the foundations of lifelong friendships, catalysts for personal growth, and classrooms for learning about and thriving in our world. And whereas the Chandler Parks and Recreation Opportunities welcome everyone from all backgrounds, cultures, and walks of life to find their place of belonging within parks and recreational activities. And whereas Park and Recreation Month celebrates the people who bring our parks and recreation programs to life, the professionals who steward our park amenities and care for our landscapes, the teams who dedicate their talent to creative programs, activities, and events that unite us as a community and benefit us all as individuals. Now therefore, I, Kevin Hartke, Mayor of the City of Chandler, Arizona, do hereby proclaim July 2024 as Park and Recreation Month. And we encourage all residents to explore what Chandler has to offer, from exploring our 69 parks to participating in our rewarding programs. Woo!
Thank you, Mayor. So my name's Cory. I'm the Assistant Director of Fund here for the City of Chandler, better known as Parks and Recreation. And this year's Parks and Recreation Month theme, Where You Belong, celebrates the many ways Parks and Recreation professionals across the country foster a sense of belonging in their community by providing welcoming and inclusive programs, essential services for all ages and abilities, and safe, accessible spaces to build meaningful connection. Parks and Recreation Month is also a great, a really great time to shine a light on our team, including the park maintenance professionals that care for our landscapes and sports fields, keeping things clean and green, and the recreation team that foster learning and fun through creative programming. Our team also includes numerous partners in play, such as our sister division of Parks and Recreation, the Chandler Public Library, but also a number of community youth sports organizations, the Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, ICAN, RAD, Pretty Precise Step Team, and several other organizations like the school districts within our community. That's just to name a few. It is with these partnering organizations and a very strong team that Chandler provides its residents and visitors an especially robust sense of belonging within Parks and Recreation. So I challenge you today, take this month to discover, imagine, and grow, and I'm sure that we can help you find a place where you belong. Thank you.
All right, Cory, I've got a question for you. Naming this is above your pay grade, but explaining it is not. We refer to our, our Parks and Recreation as Parks with an S in Recreation, but this proclamation is Park and Recreation Month. Why?
So we are part of our professional, our National Professional Association is the National Recreation and Park Association, NRPA. So it is Park and Recreation Month. We are all within one park, Mother Earth. I just made that up.
That was good, John. That was very good. Let's take a photo.
Counsel, that was fun. I think, Vice Mayor, were you the one that recommended that the dance group? Thank you. Yeah.
They did a good job.
Amazing. All right, council. Next on our agenda or in our study session are items that have been called in. So first is item number three, I called it in, Enhanced Municipal Services District Agreement. And I'd like to invite Lauren Cole. And with a staff presentation with DCCP President Rebecca Hill. Welcome, professionals.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm here to discuss the EMSD contract between the city and the DCCP. between the city and the DCCP. As a reminder, the EMSD is in its nineteenth year, and it was created in two thousand and five. The EMSD is formed to provide public services above and beyond typical city services. As a reminder, the process, the assessment was approved by the Board and authorized by property owners. A hundred percent of the assessment proceeds are paid to the district, and City Council officially enables this district. On May twenty-third, Council approved the annual assessment for twenty-four, twenty-five, and the voluntary city contribution of uh of a hundred and thirty thousand nine hundred eighty-one dollars. So next steps are tonight, the possible approval of the DCCP contract. And with that, I will pass that on to Rebecca Hill, the Executive Director of the DCCP, for her presentation.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Counsel. As Lauren mentioned, my name is Rebecca Hill, Executive Director of the Downtown Chandler Community Partnership. The DCCP provides above and beyond standard city services, as she just mentioned, but I'd like to take a quick minute with you to share our mission, share our Board of Directors, and a brief overview of our services. The DCCP mission statement, the Downtown Chandler Community Partnership is a five oh one C six not-for-profit corporation, whose mission is to mobilize leadership and resources to advance the development of Downtown Chandler as a regional destination for shopping, dining, living, culture, and the arts. Our Board of Directors include Downtown Chandler business owners, property owners, and developers, all of them owning businesses that are thriving and part of the fabric of downtown. The DCCP services include management to provide board meetings, stakeholder meetings, strategic planning, sustainability, budgets, building partnership, and advocacy. In the last fiscal year, we held ten board meetings, and six standard stakeholders' meetings include two marketing meetings and an operations meeting as well. These included best practices, collaboration between stakeholders, and more. Events are one of the more visual services that we provide, including the farmer's market, wedding walk, Small Business Saturday, various pub crawls, and creating great partnerships that allow us to host Fine Arts and Wine Festival, Downtown Chandler Barbecue Festival, Oktoberfest with the great partners of Santan and Petal House Breweries, as well as the Art Walk, which is supported by our awesome council. Another important pillar in our marketing of downtown, we have more than thirty-three thousand followers on our combined pages, and we have several thousand who subscribe to our monthly newsletter. And we create various campaigns throughout the year to include Channel Your Chill, which includes the dive-in movie for our families, stay-and-play campaigns to attract leisure travelers and locals. In addition, we help all of the business market their specials, services, and events. But it's more than just getting the word about what's happening in downtown. We're committed to the experience and welcoming of visitors. Placemaking, such as planting flowers, placing American flags, holiday lights, displays, rooftop lighting, and an overall inviting downtown. One of the most important and noticeable services we provide is the clean team, and the purpose is to ensure litter and garbage is picked up, graffiti is removed and/or reported promptly, emptying trash cans, removing stickers and random flyers on the poles, as well as emptying trash cans and wiping down surfaces such as the benches to make it clean for all who participate in downtown. They also serve as downtown ambassadors. And all of this could not be accomplished without the collaboration of our wonderful downtown businesses, various city departments, and our local business partners. I want to take a minute to both highlight and thank all of the city departments and the local businesses who we partner with outside of our district. Obviously, our downtown businesses are our primary focus, and the rock stars that we love to champion. But collaboration is very important to us, and we have done well at supporting and partnering with Chandler businesses. A couple that I'd just like to highlight is obviously the schools, Hamilton High School, Perry High School, um, in our district, and our, um, one of our great contributors is First Credit Union. Um, Reliable Maintenance is our largest contract, and it is a local Chandler business. Um, British Swim School, the Martial Arts, uh, KidTastic Dental, all of those are Chandler businesses that we love to support and are great partners of ours. Just wanted to thank them. And um, that's all I have for now. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel, for your time and consideration. It is a great honor to serve our downtown district, our downtown businesses, and the City of Chandler.
Thank you, Rebecca and Lauren. Um, I just wanted a presentation, since we usually do this every year with this time. Anybody have any questions? All right, thank you. Next item called in was by Councilmember Stewart, requesting a presentation by the applicant of CBREIM, Frye.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you know, we had, uh, we had talked about data centers and some other things in the past, uh, as it relates to, you know, water usage and things like that. So we were, we were looking for some information on that, um, and what this particular group might be doing.
Do you have anybody here from the organization? All right, come on up, sir. Did you want a general presentation or a specific question?
General presentation on this particular project, just kind of give us an update and kind of what the applicant's doing to sort of fit within the community, and then some of the changes they're making to be a little bit more sustainable. Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, happy to. So for your record, my name is Taylor Earl with the Law Firm of Earl &amp; Curly. Our address is thirty-one oh one North Central Avenue in Phoenix. So appreciate the opportunity uh to present. So can everybody see this slide that's in front of me? I'll make sure you can see it before we run it forward. All right.
There we go.
All right, so I'm gonna ask uh staff help here to switch over to the one that we brought, uh, and thought I'll just, I'll just do it, but if you want me to. Perfect. Yep. Perfect. Okay, great. So what you see in the yellow is the existing data center. So this is an existing site uh that's had a data center for quite some time. It's been in operation. Um, but one of the things about this existing data center is it was parceled off. Um, and so by being parceled off, uh, became a primary use. So this zoning will help to clean up the zoning that's there today. But also, if you look at that parking lot to the south, you have a really underutilized parking lot, um, not getting a lot of use. And so our proposal is also to bring in an expansion of that use within that parking lot, bring in a good economic use to a site that really wouldn't be used for anything else. The reality is that with a secure use like that and a small little footprint like that, you really wouldn't have a whole lot of other uses that would go into that space. And so it makes logical sense to do this type of, of expansion into that space. Um, one of the things we focused on and worked with staff on is to bring in high-level design. We know that's important to the city, and we think that this will be a really nice piece to have on Frye Road. So you have uh architectural elements that will be incorporated into this that are uh glass and materials. But also, if you look at this sort of uh image here, you'll see that we have actual artwork that's being incorporated into the design. Uh, this is both on the west elevation and on the south elevation. And you can see in this, in this image, that the, the buildings that connects into the existing data center, it brings in a nice parapet. So you're bringing in this type of imagery. In fact, the little uh image you see in the bottom right-hand corner, it's drawing back to a time of Chandler when the major network was your canal system. And so now you have the major network being data and being uh tech. And so it's kind of blending these two, sort of call back to history. And so it's a nice art, art piece that will be um incorporated into the building. Now, we know that there's points of discussion with data centers. I would say these three are kind of the three main points of discussion that have been had, sound, water usage, and job creation. So I'll briefly touch on how our project um addresses each one of those. So first with sound. Um, the city's new regulation for data centers, many of members of this council were part of bringing that uh to the city. And I'll, if I could just sort of summarize its brief, its major highlights. It's one, you measure the ambient sound before you build. You work with the community. After you build it, you measure the ambient sound again. And what you make sure is that you don't rise above the former ambient levels, those baseline conditions. So the new ambient sound levels cannot exceed pre-operation sound levels. So it's a really important, it's, it's a very difficult ordinance, it's a high, it's a high bar. But that was something that we made sure we could be in compliance with. We did our sound study, as you see here with the yellow pins, including the, the sound ordinance, it requires you to measure from the nearest residential, which in this case would be kitty corner from us, a new multifamily development. So we made sure to measure from that location, so that when we come back and do the second measurement, that we are making sure we don't rise above the conditions that existed prior to the operation. We're using sound mitigating techniques by the parapet walls that we're using, tall parapet walls, this, the system of the parapets themselves, um, acoustical wall system. And, and the bottom line is, the engineers have confirmed, we will be in compliance with the city's sound norms. Yes, it's strenuous, yes, it's difficult. You made it that way by design. And so we made sure our engineers were very clear, before we ventured down this path, that we could meet that sound standard. Also, we incorporated into a development agreement that if there is a violation of that sound standard, it's not just a zoning violation, it would be a breach of contract. So we upped the ante and made sure the city had enforcement teeth against this operation, that it would need to, uh, if there were ever any issue, would have to remedy it. Uh, let's talk about water usage. This is a significant, there's actual water recovery that's going to be part of this expansion. So, under the expansion, no water chillers. That's one of the things that happens in data centers. So as we come in with new equipment, none of that would be water chilled. But more importantly, the existing data center would replace all water chillers with air cooled. Okay, so that big switchover will, will result in a large, significant water savings to the city. Water that's being consumed today under an existing data center will be swapped. And the timing of that is that we cannot get a certificate of occupancy on our expansion until we swap out that equipment. So as we come in and get our benefit, the city makes sure it gets benefit at the same time. Now, the actual water usage onsite last year was fourteen million gallons. Now, some of that obviously is office and things that would retain. But the significant chunk of that is going to be according with those water chilled units. So by making this switch, you're going to have a significant water savings to the city. Let's talk about job creation. Now, I understand that data centers may not have the job creation that maybe manufacturing would have, but the reality is, in this parking lot, you wouldn't be getting manufacturing. There wouldn't be, you, if you had an office, you'd be putting on top of the parking, which you would need for the office, and podium-style offices aren't likely. So as the staff notes in its report, there really isn't a viable use you would put here, excite, aside from this. So you have a situation where the parking lot, not generating jobs. But as we come in and put in this expansion, we're looking at between forty and fifty additional jobs. In fact, we went back and confirmed with the operator of the existing center today, and we headcounted individual people that he would be looking to hire. And we got to forty-three additional folks that would be new jobs that would be added because of this expansion, right? And so that's better than zero. And so it does provide for additional jobs for those uh individuals. There's part of a mid-rise overlay, which we think makes sense. There's height in this area, we're next to the Air Products, uh, the Hilton's across the street. So we think we meet, um, in part of the general plan, it says encourage building heights greater than forty-five feet at select locations, uh, in accordance with the policy. And we believe that this is a location where we're not afraid of height, we're not near single-family residential, there's height along Frye. And because we put in that high-level design, we think it'll actually be architecturally interesting and provide a nice gateway feature to that area. As I mentioned, there's development agreement. I'll just touch on a couple of key points. One, no new water-based cooling, removal of the water-based cooling systems, and a violation of the city's sound provisions is a violation of the agreement. So in summary, we believe that this results in a major water savings, complies with the city's strict sound standards, high-level design will complement the road system there, and it puts a parking lot to better economic use. So with that, Mr. Stewart, uh, Mayor, happy to answer any questions.
Well, that was tremendously more than I expected from a presentation. Thank you for that. You know, you know, data is like the new gold rush, right? And, and we want to be able to support the groups in the community, or i- in the businesses that not only are here in Chandler, but in Arizona, and being able to, uh, for lack of a better term, uh, you know, uh, uh, on-source or locate those places here is great. But I think more importantly, is uh, I want to commend your, your partner, your client, for stepping up and becoming a sustainable uh member of our community and, and going through these hoops, I know was probably expensive. Um, but we are grateful that they did that, and I think the community will be as well. So I, I really appreciate the thorough presentation. Thank you.
Counsel, any additional questions? Councilmember, say this.
Not necessarily a question, just more of a, a comment. Today with our conversation, one of my main concerns was on the sound uh for future residents that are going to be across that catty corner there. Um, but speaking with you today, I was very reassured about you guys' plan, your strategy, and the standards that you guys are gonna keep to be in compliance there. So thank you for that. As well as I did reach out to our um Fire Chief's Office, and there has been zero complaints from the fire station on sound uh right across the way. So that was another concern, so I just needed to check in with them. So, good job.
Additional questions? Saying no questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Earl. It's good to see you. There's some people that have first names and last names that are, that could, could be switchable, so I always have to think about you. Next item called in, uh, item number nine, I was called for a presentation by Councilmember Stewart, a comment by Councilmember Harris, a question by Councilmember Poston, and a summary by Councilmember Orlando. So creative use of possibilities. Why don't we start with a presentation, then go to a comment, a question, a summary, and see if anybody else has anything to say? So with that, could I have uh Christian Slice from ASU coming up?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you an update on the Chandler Endeavor Contract, as well as activities of this past year. So several years ago, um, you may remember, staff received council direction to identify opportunities more closely aligned with our university partners and engage them to further their activity in our community and bring their resources to bear within our community. Um, at that time, council asked for uh opportunities on how we can increase activity at ACIC, or also known as the ASU Chandler Innovation Center. So one of the outcomes from that original meeting, um, was our original contract with ASU ENI, um, to deliver business incubation services within Chandler. At that time, council provided a direction on how we would like to see the incubator operate, how it would help activate ACIC, and what benefits it would bring to our entrepreneurial business community. Um, at that time, I can assure you, the ASU team heard your feedback and have worked diligently to meet your expectations over the past year while building a new program from scratch. Um, I'm gonna invite out Ms. Kristen Slice, uh, to provide you an update on where the program was, where it is, and where it's headed into the future. Additionally, we have two endeavor clients to provide an update on uh their business growth, their perspective on the program, that will help reinforce the fact that the Chandler Incubator is meeting our entrepreneurial community's expectations. So with that, I'd like to invite Kristen up.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Counsel. I'm really excited to be able to share with you tonight, and I wanted to start it off with a couple of key facts. Uh, for every new business per one hundred people, your community adds four hundred and eighty-five dollars to the average household income of every member of that community. More new businesses has proven to lower economic equality. In fact, for every one percent increase in entrepreneurial activity, it correlates to a two percent decline in poverty. The bottom line, entrepreneurship and increased entrepreneurship doesn't just benefit the individual entrepreneurs themselves, it benefits the entire community, creating resilient, loving, amazing places to live and thrive. And that's what we've created here in Chandler. And I'm most excited to share with you one specific stat. Since July of last year, the ASU Edson ENI team has engaged over a thousand fifty-three people in the entrepreneurial ecosystem that we are building here in Chandler, meeting the gar-, the bar and goal that was set out by this council in the first year of this program. A year ago, we were given the opportunity to say, how do we create an incubator program in the community, one that is truly aligned with the ASU charter? What makes us unique as an institute is our charter states that we not only are going to be inclusive, but we're going to define our success by whom we include, not whom we exclude. Traditionally, business incubators are designed to choose a few select winners and to throw lots of weight behind those winners. So I was very honored to be part of the team that was given this task of creating a new, hyper-inclusive model of community incubation right here in Chandler. I'm proud to tell you that this is currently setting the bar for inclusive entrepreneurial support across the country. I've been interviewed by several publications and have been able to cite the support of this council and the creation of this program as a new bar when it comes to innovation and inclusivity. Chandler Endeavor Innovation Incubator looks at a variety of different pathways on how do we deliver this promise? Well, we got busy putting together lots of different programs, mainly cornerstoneed by our Venture Innovation Incubator Monthly Forums. We've had nine monthly forums that have been accompanied with online modules. They've highlighted fireside chats. And most importantly, what we've done in this model is we've said, how do we support entrepreneurs do we support entrepreneurs, small business owners, artisans, and makers, no matter what stage of development they're at, by providing them accessible tools around lean startup and innovation? And how we do that is by connecting and creating deep networks of diverse communities to help them really accelerate and determine their own growth. In the first year, we've already hit several major milestones, including creating a unique seed funding grant competition with $15,000 in seed funding going to six different ventures here locally. We've also provided dedicated office space to seven different ventures that have also served as mentors giving back into the community. You can see, we've also unleashed a variety of different programs that we have across the community to build that robust pipeline of over 1,000 entrepreneurs, including our East Valley Innovation Night and authorpreneurship. When it comes to who we've served, I heard the feedback from this council, knowing that the community was dedicated to an inclusive entrepreneurial community. I am proud to tell you that we have watched those metrics of who shows up and who are we serving, and that the diversity of our program and the participants within it actually mirrors the diversity of the community of Chandler, which is a real anomaly when it comes to entrepreneurship, especially high-growth acceleration and incubation. But instead of me telling you who participated in these programs, I thought I would introduce and invite a couple of our founders themselves to come up and share a little bit about what Chandler Endeavor means to them. Yes, we have great incubator programs and mentors and lots of programming, but I wanted them to share with with you all what exactly Chandler Endeavor has meant to them. So first, I would love to invite up Justin Moore, the founder of Agogi.
Hello.
Hello.
Chandler Endeavor's been absolutely critical for our success. Since coming here to Arizona to launch a company, I didn't know which city to land in. And after meeting Kristen in Tempe and hearing about Chandler Endeavor, we've since landed a multimillion-dollar contract with the USDA to be spent on marketing. We're about to spend a lot of money on marketing and build this company to a significant amount, a lot of tax revenue, a lot of jobs, and eventually what we're going to do is, we want to have a facility to manufacture our protein. And that would have never happened without Kristen's facility, and that's the just one win that's going to happen here. So, thank you for your time. I can't tell you how important it's been when you're an entrepreneur and you're kind of floating around, to have a home, to have camaraderie, and have, you know, a community. And that's what this means to me. So thank you.
Congratulations.
And the reason I asked Justin to come is not only is Justin one of the exemplars as a veteran, as a community leader, as a founder, he has also actively taken it on himself as we have put the position of the culture within the incubator to go out and recruit and build in new entrepreneurs and welcome other people in, which is the reason we invited Mackenzie, who is one such example of the outreach that Justin has done for our program, to share a little bit about what Chandler Endeavor has done for her.
Hello. So Chandler Endeavor to me is a family that's pushing me to be the successful entrepreneur that I know I can be. Without their help, I really wouldn't know how to pitch my business, and because of all the guidance they've given me, I've been able to win funding from multiple pitch competitions here in the valley. And I know things are just getting started for my business. They've been giving me mentorship opportunities and really have just opened up the door to so many new people that I would never meet without them. So, thank you all for supporting us. I can't wait to grow with the Chandler community. Thank you.
Now, unfortunately, we didn't have the time to be able to share all of the amazing stories that we're already seeing coming out of Chandler Endeavor, but I hope you take a chance to look at some of the names and faces that are involved with this pitch deck, because the truth is, you're going to see a lot of them in headlines over the upcoming year. So now I get to share a little bit about what's next for us. We spent the first year building out a hyper-inclusive model of incubation, building out a community of support throughout the ecosystem. And we're so excited to spend the next year doing what ASU does best, what we call innovation, which is taking the feedback from the founders that have participated, from the investors who have gone back to the community, from the community members themselves, to continue to improve the education, the resources, and the accessibility that we have. In the next year, you'll also see we're continuing to raise the bar for ourselves in terms of what expectation is. So rolling out new metrics to measure the ecosystem overall and what that connectivity score looks like, rolling out new metrics to measure the specific economic impact that each individual venture that participates in our program will be able to achieve. And so we're excited to really define our success moving forward, not by a total number of programs or kind of some of those early indicators, but instead really focusing in on how can we move the needle when it comes to the founders that we engage with, and how can we have deeper engagement? So instead of 1,000 people, we've actually decreased that number with the goal being that we want to have the time and bandwidth to have deeper engagement with those 500 founders that we're working with on a regular basis. So that's what's coming up for us in the next year, and I wanted to end with a thank you. This city council has been tremendous advocates, not just for this program, but for the individual founders that we have, which is really the lifeblood of our program. We've been able to create a community of leaders that give back and are participating in our community and set the bar in our community, because you guys have amplified their amazing voices. So I wanted to say thank you for the time and commitment that you've had, not only in supporting us, but in also supporting our founders, and I'll now open it up for questions.
So let me continue with Mark, then we'll go to councilmember Poston for your question.
Well, that answered pretty much all of my questions, but I definitely want to make a comment. I think your energy, and Micah, thank you for pulling this together and your team with ASU. I think this is what we were all dreaming about, is relates to like having vision for what an entrepreneurial ecosystem might look like in the East Valley. And I know that you're drawing talent from all over the area, and I love how ASU went to them, so thank Dr. Crow for that. But, you know, when I went to the event that you held and invited me to, you could feel...
You mean when you crashed our event, to be specific?
When I crashed your event, thank you. But you could sense the energy.
Yeah.
You could sense the energy and and the passion of the people in there, and as an entrepreneur, I get it, right? I get when you're kind of, you have something in your head and you're trying to bring it forward, you just need that little bit of help, or you just need guidance, or you just need a home.
Yeah.
Sometimes you just need a home. My home back in the day was gangplank when I was starting my my agency C2C. This is entirely different, and I think what you're seeing coming out with the two behind you and the others is phenomenal. And there's more than that. I know there's a lot of stories about this entrepreneurial ecosystem that's created. So now, the next step, Mike, is we got to get these, we got to get the financing for them, right? We got to get the angel, we got to get the angel investors showing up too, which I'm sure you're working on as well. But thanks so much for all you're doing, we're really grateful, and for the for the community of Chandler, this really fits our brand, so thanks.
You, councilmember.
Councilmember Poston.
Well, I'd just like to say thank you. We, you were under a lot of scrutiny and had a big lift this year, and you met the challenge all year long.
Thank you.
So, thank you for that. Thank you for the constant reporting and the delivery of data that we get on a regular basis. I really appreciate that. Helps us understand what you're doing and what you plan to do in the future. My question for you is that, how do you intend to track your graduates? And thank you for bringing the founders here tonight. I mean, that's the real story behind all of this, business success in our community. So what I want to know is how you're going to track those graduates, and then honestly, selfishly for the city of Chandler, how do we make these founders sticky to Chandler? Are you working with our economic development team? That's where Mike is sitting out here, to try and find those places in Chandler and make sure that, you know, they're helping either get their employees from Chandler, or maybe we can find those locations for them as they move forward. We certainly want to keep them here and watch them grow in our city.
You got it. Thank you, councilwoman. Yes, great questions. So first, a couple of them when it comes to graduation. So a piece of what makes our incubation model unique is that it is based on an empowerment model, meaning you get to come and keep coming whenever it serves you. And we know that any point in the entrepreneurial journey, innovation can apply. So there's always those fixings, right? Coming back when you need to. So we always keep our doors open. Now, we do have a cohort model, and it's called an open cohort every six months. So that way entrepreneurs don't feel like they're signing on for a forever kind of experience. So how we structure that is we let them know, yep, this is the end of the cohort, we always end it with a pitch competition to have an end of the cohort, but we tell them this is an ongoing community engagement. And we tested that model, and we found a large portion, over 90% of our participants in the first cohort rolled into the second cohort, which I think speaks to the quality of the programming that was there, but also, I think, spoke to the desire to continue into that community. And to your second question, a piece of how we built in to make sure that they stay there, I was excited to see one of our, one of our founders participated in your civic program and was one of the shirts that was up here today, right? A large piece of that is that, instead of just focusing on incubation being, here is your homework, go do your homework, we focus on incubation being building a community and building networks of community. The reason I brought Justin and Mackenzie was because they're a really great example of, Justin was attracted to the community because of what was here. He met Mackenzie at the Chandler, at a farmer's market here in Chandler, right? His interns are now operating out of Chandler. And so we've really focused on how do we build those relationships that make people stay? Because at the end of the day, incentives, you know, even giving things like office space, time is always going to change those things, but we know relationships, and the more we can build relationships with quality mentors, funders, interns, working capital, as well as just peers, is really what's going to make people stay here in the Chandler community.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Well, I got to honestly say, I'm very much impressed.
Thank you.
I think that you've, you have taken the strides and listened to the community, and a lot of my feedback was very pointed and directed, because I know, I knew that there was more to the program than what was originally offered just one year ago. You told me a year ago, we're going to have active engagement, we're going to have a plan. And I know the, just coming into last year, we was kind of coming out of COVID pandemic and a lot of different other variables, and everyone was trying to get back into regular community. But you stood here before me and said, listen, I'm going to do this work, you're going to see the turnaround. And I can honestly say that I'm very, very proud. And to see this turnaround, to see this collaboration with partnerships with people in the community, and to have testimonies to just, you know, back it up. So I'm just super impressed. Micah, great job. What a way to work with ASU, and I'm glad to have you guys as a partner. Now I can expect more.
Yeah.
And so the expectation is not going to drop, it's going to continue to go up. But just keep doing what you guys are doing. You really are making a difference in our Chandler community, and we appreciate your work. So I just wanted to let you know, I see you, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That means a lot.
Absolutely. Councilmember Linda.
Thank you, Mayor. Great, great presentation, and congratulations to the stakeholders, or, no, not stakeholders.
Founders.
Founders, thank you, founders. Appreciate it. I just made you an investment partner now. Hey, I know you had some metrics you changed. One of them was from 1,000 to 500. What are some of the other metrics you found that you needed to address to make this even better program?
Yes, so that's the main metric that was shifted. The ones, the two that we added in, in particular, were related to specific funding readiness. So how do we look at individual ventures? So traditional economic impact, jobs, capital, things like that, we're absolutely going to track. But what we know and what we see in the diversity of founders we've been able to serve is that a lot of those economic impact measures aren't going to capture all of the amazing effort that a small business owner who hires a 1099 and creates a job internship and creates that local impact, we're not necessarily going to see that in, did you raise millions of dollars in capital? So the reason we created that new funding readiness metric was based off of, one, the feedback of the founders that showed up. So a lot of founders that were showing up to the incubator were saying, hey, we're now interested in looking at outside capital. And that didn't just mean traditional, in traditional investment, because we had a diversity of founders show up. So we're creating metrics to be able to really track what has been their funding readiness path, have we been able to move the needle on it by their participation on it. The second major metric that we added in was a connectivity score. Looking overall at the ecosystem, so again, how do you measure if a city or a community is really thriving when it comes to entrepreneurship? When we look at other early-stage ecosystems across the country, the one metric that they consistently look at is what we call a connectivity score. Short version, if you ask the average entrepreneur, how many people do they know that are entrepreneurs? What is their answer? And that number in particular is really telling around, are we creating not just one connection, but many connections? And we know those dense networks of connections is what allows a community, and what we found through a lot of research around COVID, was communities that had that dense network of small business owners, entrepreneurs, and mentors were really able to thrive and continue to evolve. So that's the second metric that we're adding in, is a connectivity score. We were very pleased at the number of partners that we were able to engage in the Chandler ecosystem. Even our Innovation Night had over 30 different partners regularly engaging. And so we wanted to make sure that we were capturing that impact. We know we're an incubator, our first service is to the founders themselves, and we want to be able to articulate to all of our stakeholders, it's not just those individual founders, but the overall community sustainability that we're working on. So that's why we added that second additional metric.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Rills.
If there was one person who was really upset about the fact that we were not getting anything out of that building, that was me. And I made it very clear to everyone who wanted to listen, and you came along, and you did that.
Thank you.
You did that. We sat down, we had an opportunity to sit down with Dr. Crow as Black elected officials over Arizona, and that was the first thing, I had an opportunity to look at him straight in the eye and said to him that, if you did not do anything with, over there, it was going to be between you and me.
Yeah.
And he said, I love that. I love the fact that I'm being called to the table to make things happen, because I thrive on that. And I see the passion in your staff and yourself every time I meet you guys along the place in the community and doing different things. So thank you for doing that. Micah, your team, again, is excellent, always working in that sphere where you bring the best to us every time we ask you for something. And to the founders, if we didn't have this, you wouldn't be able to thrive. And so I want to thank you for trusting this, so that you could be where you are right now and continually be. The metrics that you described there, it's something that I'm so passionate about, seeing being able to connectivity, being able to be that connector, because it cannot be done without that. We can sit in our office all day long, but if we're not on the street, hitting the pavement, meeting people at the flea markets, different places where we can actually see what their dreams are, to help them, the pathway, showing them where it is going to end for them, they can see it in the future before they even start it. So you did that. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, councilmember.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say that once this program started, I was pretty critical of it, not of just prior efforts, but now I see it as critical to our efforts to raise up entrepreneurs in innovation. So you flipped my criticalness. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
No other comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item brought forth was by, item number 15, by councilmember Stewart requesting a presentation for our first responder fire cancer screenings. You're tall, you don't look like Val, but you've got the information.
Thank you, Mayor. This kind of caught my eye, just want to kind of, a real high-level overview on this. I think this is a good program, but I just want to kind of know what the results have been and what the good news story is here.
Absolutely. Through the mayor, councilmember Stewart, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you guys about the benefits of firefighter cancer screening. It is important to examine the scope of the issue, to really understand why cancer prevention's so important to our Chandler firefighters. Cancer is now the leading cause of line-of-duty deaths for firefighters in the nation. In addition to that, firefighters are at significantly higher risks of developing cancer as compared to the general population. For example, firefighters are 200% more likely to be diagnosed with testicular cancer or mesothelioma. They're 150% more likely to be diagnosed with multiple myeloma or non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. They're 140% more likely to be diagnosed with skin cancer, and 130% more likely to be diagnosed with malignant melanoma, brain cancer, or prostate cancer. Not only are these statistics concerning to us, but we here in Chandler have experienced cancer much closer to home. In Chandler Fire's 87-year history, we have had one line-of-duty death, and that was due to cancer in 2018. Even more recently, through our one-time grant-funded cancer screening program, we identified eight different cancers in our members that we have on our department right now. One of those was serious, and another was nearly life-threatening. To speak to the impact... One of those was serious and another was nearly life-threatening, to speak to the impact of what cancer screening has done for us. Often with cancer, symptoms don't arise until the disease has progressed into the later stages. And that's what makes cancer diagnosis so difficult, which is why early diagnosis and screening is so critical, is because it directly improves survivability. When you look at survivability rates for things like kidney cancer, if you find it early in stage zero to one, 76% survivable. If you find it in the later stages, 14%. If you do colorectal cancer, 91% survivable if you find it early. It's only 15% survivable in the late stages. So these are just examples of why early diagnosis, early screening is so critical. From a financial perspective, given the state of Arizona's presumptive cancer laws, it is far more economically viable to spend money on screening services rather than funding cancer treatment. According to the World Health Organization, it's two to four times less expensive to treat cancer on, in early stages than it is in later stages. And that's not just because of the duration of treatment, but it's also because early cancer has so many more opportunities for treatment that are less invasive and they're less expensive. So screening is by far the most effective and economical way for us to reduce the impact of cancer on our firefighters, which is why this ongoing program that is before you with Vincere Cancer Center is so important, just like the support that this council has shown and the City Manager's Office has shown to our firefighters by supporting our efforts. So thank you for that. Our program is, is getting ready to take that next iteration from the one-time grant-funded. We had 95% participation in that program. We were able to identify 19 significant findings, eight of which were cancer. As I spoke, two of them were significant findings, but it was very, very effective. We've been able to look and learn from that and, and now going to the next phase of an ongoing program, we've collaborated with the physicians group and we have designed a, an excellent program to look at what is impacting firefighters right now. We've learned, we've scaled ages, we've, we've looked at new programs and we're gonna have the best cancer screening program in the state, in my opinion, and we couldn't do that without your support. And we are very excited to get, to get going on. And with that, I'll take any other questions.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you for that and I appreciate the data, you know, the, the most important thing here is the human element, right? But there's an economic element to this and, you know, this is one of those things that it's a great investment, not only in our people, but in, I mean, frankly, the savings that come from detecting these things early, you know. I, you know, it's probably not the time for it, but I certainly would love to see this as an ongoing, you know, something for the next budget. I'll be long gone, but I certainly would love to see this as an ongoing budget item into the future if it's not already, thank you.
It is, Councilmember.
It is. We, we, we were granted an ongoing support package, so we will be continuing this in the future, thank you.
That's good to hear.
Councilmember Reals.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, this is amazing. As a first responder, when you were talking about the prevention, well, early, early prevention is the best prevention in our books. That's how we move with these kinds of things. You mentioned testicular cancer and, and I know there is a correlation between heat and also that part, is that incorporated into the new program where we will have protection for the heat into those particular areas to make sure that we navigate the whole process so the heat is not affecting?
Yeah, there, there's been some, some significant advancements in the groin, the neck and the underarms are very absorbent areas of the body and we know that. So the advancements in not only the gear that we wear to protect those, how we treat that gear, how soon we get out of it, our process of decontamination, we bag our gear now, we don't wear it even back to the station.
Okay.
We bag it, we wash it, we let it off gas, we have two sets of turnouts, thanks to the support of this council, so we're able to get into clean gear, we have our firefighters that shower immediately. There's been so much data that has come out over the recent years as to how to remove some of those carcinogens from us, whether it's heat or just open pores and absorption or the material itself, we've been making strides. So our rehabilitation to our, to our decontamination, to our equipment purchases, all of that is, is aimed to address those, those concerns.
Really appreciate that you guys are looking in every garment of this whole process in order to make an impact in that area. Thank you, we love our first responders.
Yeah, we appreciate you so much for the support.
Councilmember Poston.
Thank you for the presentation. Could you speak a little bit to, as to why this particular program is different than a typical cancer screening and how specific it is to our first responders?
Sure, yeah, it is, it is different in that it is, it is robust in the depth of it, but it's also focused in some specific areas. So things that we've learned in the region, this region has advanced in the last five years in, in cancer detection. Many agencies have, have been awarded grants and so we're learning, we have thousands of firefighters now that have gone through, gone through cancer screening. What we're finding is things like kidney cancer in 30-year-old patients, which is completely abnormal to the general population. So we've scaled ages, we've invested pretty significantly into screening techniques like whole-body MRI, which are non-invasive, so we're not getting radiology, but it gives us a very comprehensive look. It's 45 minutes inside that tube, if you've ever been in one, it's not very comfortable, but it's very advanced. We have cardiac screening in there, we also have PFOS testing, we're testing for heavy metals. So we're looking at things that are specific to, to show in a firefighter how that works. We're doing, we're also doing colonoscopies at an early age because colorectal cancer is so significant in the firefighter population. So we are really focused and, but what we're doing is very detailed. So it's, it's something that's specific and tailor-made for our, for our work group, which is, which is, we're a huge beneficiary, so.
Well, thank you. And can I just say congratulations again on your participation rate, 95% is amazing. So I'm really glad to see that.
They're, they're real believers in it, which is awesome. And we're seeing the results, which has proven itself to be effective.
Exactly what we want, thank you, Chief.
I think that wives are on them to get there.
That's the trick.
Get, get, get to the spouse, get to the spouse, you'll get them there.
Thank you, Keith.
Awesome.
Any other questions? Next item called in was item 33 by Councilmember Orlando for, looking at the IGA for participation in the East Valley Critical Incident Response Team. Chief Chapman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to provide you an update on the East Valley Critical Incident Response Team, effective July 1st of 2024, eight East Valley police agencies will be participating in the East Valley Critical Incident Response Team, responsible for investigating any critical incident in death or serious bodily injury involving a law enforcement agency. This applies to officers on or off duty while acting under the color of their authority. This is in response to House Bill 2650, which goes into effect on July 1st, 2025, which requires towns and municipalities to have agencies other than their own investigate critical incidents involving their personnel. Critical force incident is defined as either an officer-involved shooting or any use of force resulting in death or serious bodily injury. So the East Valley Critical Incident Response Team will start July 1st and they will respond to other jurisdictions. What that means for Chandler PD is that we are a part of this cohort and we will be responsible for investigating critical incidents involving the Mesa Police Department. And so this is a, kind of a trial period from July 1st of this year to July 1st of next year, to work out the logistics and the kinks to make sure that we have on-call responsibilities and appropriate personnel responding to these and then providing the necessary investigative follow-up.
Councilmember Reals. Thank, thank you, and I know this is mandatory, but by the same token intuitively, it makes a lot of sense. And I don't know how this bill came about, but it seems like it's a credible, credibility, independent, a fresh look at something, so I, I think it's a great, a great approach. The other question, the only question I had about this earlier is, are you gonna be rotating cities or are you specifically gonna be working with Mesa, for example, Chandler and Mesa, or like maybe Gilbert may do one and then you may do one on Queen Creek or something? Is that how it works or?
Through the Mayor, Councilmember Orlando, the logistics are different for every city depending on their participation. Chandler Police Department's role in this will be specific to investigating critical incidents in the city of Mesa. However, we will also send support personnel for other jurisdictions. By that, I mean, we won't be the lead investigative agency on there, we may send a detective just to support other agencies in jurisdictions like Gilbert or, or Tempe or Scottsdale.
And then who would be investigating Chandler if we needed that assistance?
Through the Mayor, Councilman Orlando, my understanding is that that will be Mesa PD as well.
Okay, so reciprocal.
So it's reciprocal.
And then I understand that the county's looking at doing something in a bigger picture. Would this then just fit into the county's program or?
Through the Mayor, Councilman Orlando, the, the state is actually putting together through the Department of Public Safety a statewide
Statewide.
Critical Incident Response Team that will be responsible for the entire state. As you can imagine, that is a bit of a logistical challenge to gear up for, so they have spent the last year hiring personnel and, and trying to establish those relationships. You know, looking forward, if for some reason the East Valley Critical Incident Response Team is not appropriate, productive or, or falls apart, then the default agents to, agency to investigate any of those incidents in the city of Chandler would be the DPS statewide coverage team.
So I guess the, you got about a year now for, get some lessons learned, which is always as good and then you could share those obviously with the state, the DPS, if they do stand up and we decide to go that route, right?
That's correct, through the Mayor, Councilman Orlando, yes, that, that's correct, is we're gonna see what this pilot looks like for the next year and, you know, part of the House bill was really to create transparency and accountability through a third party to come in. I'd just, you know, like to go on the record for everyone, I don't have any concerns about the quality of investigations that come out of our Detective Bureau, but this is a House bill requirement that is legislatively mandated for every agency in the state.
Yeah, and I, I understand that and like I said, we've done a credible job in the past of, you know, being an honest broker on a situation and making sure the public, we also have our police citizen review board as well, which is another check on the system. So this is just a third, third check that we could actually feel comfortable that whatever incident happened, that we're able to get to the facts of the case.
Through the Mayor, Councilman Orlando, that's correct, just another checks and balance for, for everybody.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any additional conversation or questions on this? Thank you, Chief, thank you. Council, our next item is something we, we don't do often, which is a council discussion. I'm gonna share a couple things, I, I'm going to ask the city attorney to talk to us about this process and then Councilmember Orlando can start out the, the discussion. So we currently allow citizen input on our study sessions through, through our scheduled public appearance. We allow citizen input on our Thursday or regular council meetings, either on unscheduled as well as people having the ability to comment on individual items. So what I offered and, and changed, do the, being the parlebatarian at our last meeting was to do the same, offering a mechanism for our citizens to speak at both our subcommittee meetings as well as our work sessions. And so tonight, we're gonna talk about that and codify it, change it, tweak it, I'm, I'm in favor, I don't really care what the minutia is, I think the overall goal of ours is to give a vehicle. But before we do, city attorney explained to us again, the, we, we changed this process a year and a half ago through council resolution. Tell us what exactly it is now, the process.
Thank you, Mayor. Under the council rules and procedures that were adopted a little over a year ago, the process when a council member wants to bring an item forward is to submit a notice, try to update the council as, as they can in compliance with all the laws. And then it's put on the study session for discussion, then it's followed by the Thursday meeting for discussion or possible action. And specifically, if an ordinance or resolution is requested or required to enact the item, then that direction is given by city council majority at the Thursday meeting to have the city attorney draft such a document. If you want to amend the council rules to include the public comment on, for subcommittees and work sessions, if you want the rules to reflect that, the rules were adopted by resolution, so they need to be amended by a resolution. So you can have discussion tonight, but on Thursday, if the council proceeds, it would be direction to bring back a, a resolution with the amended rules and procedures for action at the next council meeting.
So city attorney, on Thursday, would there be a motion for, to make that resolution to pass to you or just a consensus for you to draft and then we would vote on it at the July meeting or so?
Mayor, I would recommend that a motion to give direction to that effect be done on Thursday if that's the desire of the council.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Orlando, start us off.
No, thanks, Mayor, appreciate it. And thank you for last week putting this, at least from a mayor directive and as you and I chatted a little bit about, I'm an institutionalist, I like to sit things in writing and memorialized and I know you in some respect, or a lot of respects are like that as well, but I just wanna take us back, council. Late, late last year, earlier sometime, I was approached by several residents who I'm sure all of you've spoken with. And they said, hey, you know, we were at council meeting, we were at a work session, we were at a study session, excuse me, a subcommittee and we wanted to speak. In fact, we've had a couple incidents, I know where a resident was at our subcommittee and she wanted to speak and we couldn't let her speak legally because we, it's not scheduled. And that was on the Parks, you might remember it was on that Parks, Parks Commission, one of us on there. So I, I thought about it a little bit and I said, well, look, if you, if you folks want me to do this, you put it in writing of what you want to see, which they did, email, and I said, please contact the council members because it's, we're a body up here of seven and we have to agree on, on any changes to what the policy and procedures are. So that's where we are and my intent was to talk about this at our council retreat in January, but of course, we had to postpone that until, what, March and then we postponed again to April. And I did bring it up as a dialogue issue, introducing it, in some cases, kind of, we went through a little bit of a discussion at that standpoint. And where we are tonight is, again, going back to what you did earlier, so I, I'm hoping that there's movement here where we could actually codify this and just move this forward and look, look at this issue. One other thing is, I really want to say this, this council throughout the years, Mayor, you've been on many of these councils as well, we have been one of the first to televise study sessions, we're the first councils to televise council meetings, we were the first councils to put websites together so people could contact us, and I can go on and on and on of how we over, tried to over-communicate with our community and been very receptive. I see some councils in the valley now starting to restrict dialogue or at least maybe make it more, I don't know, well, just put it that way, make it more of a, of a, an art, a science rather than an art. And we've been very open on this council, Mayor, you have been very open on this council and the mayor's before you and the council members for you. So all I'm trying to do today is to codify this, put it in writing so that we all feel comfortable that we, 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 we had input on this and could move forward with it, so with that.
So, okay, so, let me start the suggestion, so I, and I've heard several from you is to allow up to 15 minutes at the end of the session to, for people to speak, up to three minutes, so it really won't interfere with the, the heart of the discussion, but it will allow that. Are there any other nuances that anyone would like to have to add to this? Councilmember Poston.
Thanks, Mayor. I was sort of on the test run subcommittee with the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Stewart and I, I think we're very, very close, so I appreciate that. I think the, the people in attendance were, appreciated that opportunity to speak, but I think there's just tweaks that could help us, I'd like to make sure that we're all on the same page. I think, and I'll, I'll let you two speak for yourselves, but to me, it felt like maybe my expectation of the way that should be, some of the things should be done were a little different than others. Do we allow people to speak at the beginning of the meeting? Do we allow them to speak after each item? Do we allow them only to speak at the end like we do here at our regular council meetings? That's just one example. I think there are a few tweaks that we can make, I, I've, I've talked to staff about them a little bit, like maybe a clock on the table as opposed to somebody just on their phone. Let's see, I wrote a couple of others down. I, I think it felt a little bit more like a conversation sometimes between the attendees and our city staff and I don't think really that's the intent of that, that in my personal opinion, I think- my personal opinion. I think it's really the opportunity for our residents to address the council members, as opposed to just beginning a conversation with staff. Because I think that's how we do it in these meetings. I think that should be similar. These are just my opinions on this. And then, I think that was, I think that was the gist of that, just to maybe formalize it a little. But I will say, it is very important to me that those subcommittee meetings do offer that opportunity for us as council. It is our one opportunity to have a little bit more of a relaxed dialogue about the issues that we're talking about. I wouldn't want to lose that at all, but I think just a few tweaks and that we all agree on would be helpful to allow us to make this work a little more and function a little bit better.
Okay. And there's several ways to do tweaks. Would be, one, to have the city attorney draft a document and then send that to us, and then tweak it that way. But certainly from the days, we could put some of the foundations or walls to that. So, I'd like to hear if there's anything specifically of direction we'd like to give her, and then we can work it out as a living document, you know, from there.
I'd be interested to just know what maybe the vice mayor and councilmember Stewart's opinions were.
Yeah.
I have a question too.
Let's go with these two, and then I'll get to you, councilmember.
No, I mean, we had, it was a productive subcommittee meeting. I do agree that there was some things that we need to work out in terms of if it's going to go in the beginning or if there's going to be at the end, the commentary, if we're going to allow the in-between, between each item, or do people need to stay for the whole entire item? Because there was individuals that were attending it that needed to get to their next thing. And the subcommittee meeting was about a couple hours long, and you can feel the angst that I'm ready to go. And so, I do think that having a clock on the table, having some more parliamentary rules in place, making it less like a dialogue, more like a, if a participant comes and they only have simple questions, that's just simple questions on a record. It's not a dialogue between us and them. It's more of a dialogue that, hey, these are the questions that will need to be addressed, and we hope that staff can get back with them. The other thing that I was going to suggest too, Mayor, just thinking about, you know, you're pretty much officiating every meeting, I mean, no matter if you're there or not, but having someone that you want to either appoint or someone that can be more of the person to call on that person or something like that. So, at your pleasure, whatever that can look like. Because it was, we worked collaboratively together, but it was, we were kind of like looking at each other like, hey, should they go? Should they not go? What should happen? So, I do think we need some more leadership and what you want that to look like. But other than that, I thought it was really good that the commentary was there. It allowed us to kind of hear a little bit more dialogue from the community. The only thing that I wanted it to be less of, I don't want people coming to the meeting to pitch to us. I felt that kind of concern, like they was pitching something to us, like a sales pitch when we're in a business meeting. I kind of felt that energy, and I didn't like that too much. I felt like we need to kind of stay focused on the business at hand. It needs to be succinct to what was supposed to happen. So, I would love to get your guidance and what you think as far as how you would want the meetings actually to function as. But other than that, I actually appreciated the commentary. At the end, I was able to get bigger insight. So, I guess with those different additions, that's something that I would like you to look at, Mayor, and see if that's something that, you know, we can kind of get a little bit more formalized. But thank you.
Councilmember Stewart, then councilmember Ellis.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, I think one of the major planks of our community and why I think Chandler is such a great place is that, you know, it's transparency and it's accessibility and being the most connected city. I think there's no question that that's one of the things that we lead on in communicating with the public. You know, I think we're lucky when we have community members that want to be involved, that want to show up and kind of share their thoughts on those things. But to councilmember Poston's, you know, point is that, you know, there has to be, it has to be kind of a living document. It's kind of evolving. We had a great study session the other day, or a subcommittee meeting, where we had a neighbor show up that offered some insight that it didn't occur to me that it was an issue. We've had other folks that have showed up here and talked about some of the utility work that we're doing and offered a different perspective that I hadn't heard of. But the other side of that is, is that you're going to have special interest groups that are going to come advocate, like we did at our subcommittee meeting, for their particular business. We literally had a vendor of the city that came and spoke to us about what they're looking for, for an opportunity from a sales perspective or from a vending perspective to our city. It's a good technology that they have, and it might be great innovative technology for our city, but it kind of changed the vibe of the subcommittee. So, we'll have to put some guardrails around this. But anytime we can get more information in these meetings and still get the business done that needs to get done, I think is going to be a good thing for us. You know, years ago, I asked about maybe extending the time between when our agenda hit to when we had the opportunity to have our study session, because for me, I have three days to review some of the things we talk about. I just talk with the city manager, you know, a big, deep one-on-one. It's almost 90 minutes long. But I'd love to have another week. I'd love to give the public another week before those agendas hit, like we are talking about before this meeting, to be able to get more feedback from the community, give people who may not be able to get the time off on a Friday to call me and to say, I have a question about this particular agenda item. That's opening up the ability for the community to be even more involved, and I'd love to see this conversation even evolve into that more. You know, I think that's pretty much all. This is not a big deal. I mean, this is something that's very easy for us, and we've talked about it and talked about it with our neighbors to put into place. And I think it just, you know, let the smarter people handle the details, and we'll make this happen. Thank you.
Councilmember Ellis.
From day one, when this was brought up into the retreat session, which I didn't really see the email come in, but later on, I received it and looked at the framework that we will have to work in, a couple of concerns that I had, and I brought them up at the retreat. I made it very clear that I did not want this to become a place where people were going to come in and shout at us and start really pointing fingers and stating what we need to do. That's not the forum for that. Whether it's in here too, it's not really the place. I would like to see some guideline around that. Well, how do we police this thing? How do we making sure that intention is a good intention? Whether we want to have truly someone who has a concern when they come? We have to listen to their concerns. And I don't want other people making it harder for other people to continue to come. Because if they become so vivacious and really become arrogant and start screaming, other people then will not, we will not allow them to do it. So, it's important to me right off the bat that we put those guidelines. Otherwise, I don't have any issue at all. I think it's important for us to allow our communication. The word that was spoken here is, we are very accessible. We're in the community 24/7. Everybody knows my cell phone number. They know where I live. We are in everything that they are doing in this community. They invite us, we show up, and they see us, and they can approach us. We're approachable. We're in the grocery stores. We're everywhere with them, in every arena. And they do have access to us. But in that forum, I think it will be, we need to make it a little bit more professional and more like, okay, yes, we hear you right here.
Councilmember Tiras.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick comment. I am in support of this. Obviously, I believe all of my fellow councilmembers and mayor want to give our residents the access to be part of these discussions and have their voices heard, which is great. I do just want to see that structure, that procedure put in place. As far as how are the residents going to sign up? When are they going to get notified? When are we going to be getting notified? Those are questions most likely for staff and for, yeah, city manager. That's going to be kind of more my main concern. I want our meetings and our discussions to remain that Chandler standard. I want residents' time, our council time, and our staff time to be respected, and that these meetings continue the decorum that we have throughout our entire organization. So, I would like to see that being put in place.
Okay. Council, I mean, I'm writing down ideas, and I think, I'm going to suggest maybe, you're listening to this, take a draft at us, and obviously, we'll, and we can add more to this conversation on Thursday.
I agree.
And if you have any private ideas, suggest, get them to the city attorney, because there's not a way that we can share them outside of this meeting, but we can resume this conversation and then take a motion on Thursday, correct?
That's correct.
Great.
Mayor, again, I really want to thank you, because by doing this, we got some really good feedback here. And to be able to now work on the policy and procedures of what we want to do, and I agree with councilmember Stewart, what you said, I don't want a sales pitch. That's not why we're here. We don't have sales pitches here. You have to stick to the agenda. And I agree with your saying, that's why part of it was to stick to the agenda at hand. And if you want to deviate, that's another issue, another time. And I agree with you, we shouldn't be having discussions that are off-agenda. I mean, it's illegal, first of all. I mean, folk meeting law. And I do like the idea of, who brought it up? Councilmember Stewart or whoever, or vice mayor, is that if we have two agenda items, maybe we just have a five-minute call to the audience. Maybe that's a good way of doing it. Then they get their issue done. They could go on their work and then have another five minutes call to the audience, or six minutes, whatever that is. I don't know what that, you know, timeframe would be. But that makes more sense, too.
Mayor, I was going to, Mayor, is okay. I would say, you know what, councilmember, what I was thinking, it may have been better to, and it's just my thoughts, it may have been better just to let them wait to the end of the whole thing, because I felt like we kind of got a little bit off track, a little bit, and it took the staff out of flow.
You're okay.
I agree.
Okay.
To that point, and I just, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I think, I wonder if we could, I agree with you that it got a little bit off track, and I think the timing got a little wonky, but maybe it could, we could talk about it, there being some discretion with us as a subcommittee, in that if we feel like, you know, maybe there's one person there and they ask us or something like that, that typically it would be at the end, but maybe have some discretion between us.
That's a really good point, if you don't mind, Mayor. Because if we have a resident expert that brings up a point like that young lady did here, where we could ask questions in a subcommittee, maybe not a work session, but in a subcommittee meeting, that was valuable information that she shared that we didn't know about.
Yes.
So, that was good. And, you know, I think at the end of the day, right, what are we trying to accomplish here? Just giving more input from the public. There's nothing wrong with that. That's what makes Chandler Chandler.
Yeah. We had transparency, and we had some good ideas that came to us that maybe we could address. So, it was good timing.
I would also suggest that, city attorney, whatever we do, is it, I understand leniency, but I, someone's recognized as a great idea. I'm sure someone else feels they have a great idea. Whether they do or not, I don't know. So, I'd say whatever we do, I would ask for consistency. And, you know, whatever that looks like, I'm just, I don't know how to say to someone else, well, your idea is not good. And, you know, in terms of, in their mind, they might have the best idea forever. And if you've got a forum, if you've got a process, then it just gives everybody the opportunity to talk, is my thought.
Mayor, maybe a better word is perspective, that someone thought of something that maybe we hadn't thought of around the table.
That's good. Yeah.
Vice mayor.
Sorry. Our last thing, too, is that even if the person who's participating in the speaking and they run out of time, there still could be opportunity for them to still connect with us after the meeting or connect with staff to further the dialogue that they have already mentioned in the subcommittee meeting. So, there'd still be some more additional discretionary movement. So, even though it may not be a dialogue in the subcommittee meeting, but we can continue to encourage the resident to have the dialogue with staff afterwards.
Yeah. City manager, you have enough to, we can bring this up Thursday, and then I guess we'll have some work to, before, hopefully, as expedient as possible that we can then bring this up, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, council. Like to close that discussion. And at this point, that's our last item. So, this meeting is adjourned.